So Van Haddad in August. In August?
Whenever it came in.
Really? Well, then I'm not sure for that. I just wonder if we discovered.
He's not succeeding. I don't know.
Exactly, that's why I thought it was really Van that didn't call me.
I think Van heard someone else. So I know Hennessy, but I think there's.
For recently.
I'll talk to him about it. All right, okay, thank you. All right, we'll call the meeting of the Community Intergovernmental Relations Committee to order. Let me just welcome everybody who is here. Normally, these meetings don't go that long. They may go a little longer today because of reviewing the video. But I want to thank the chief and his colleagues for being here and President of our Parent Advisory Council, Erica Simmons, for being here and others for being here to have this discussion. Before we go into that, however, let me just ask if there is any changes to the agenda. Can we go as forward with the agenda as outline? All right, so let me just get a motion to approve the minutes from October 13th.
So move.
Mr. Jacobs, write all in favor.
Aye.
Aye, thank you, thank you, minutes approved. All right, Mr. Semenelli, Chief, if you would, join us at the table. We're going to, one of the things that we want to make sure in our community is that we are treating our, everyone in this district is treating our children with dignity and respect. And as you know, that there was a video of an SRO officer, I believe that is, if not, that's not what they call them, equivalent in a school district that, in South Carolina, that actually slammed our student to the ground. And so I thought that the board should respond in a way which we understand how the SRO officers, the SROs would operate in our district because we do not want any SROs or anybody slamming our students to the ground. And so what I'd like for us to be able to do, oh, and let me just also welcome our Student Congress here and our Board Representative, Savion. Savion Rambit, who's also with us this evening. Because I want us to have a dialogue, I want us to understand how the SROs would engage in a similar situation that we will see on the video. So can we begin to roll the video? I wish someone would've told me, but let's just go on, we don't need the audio, can we just show the video? Is it possible to go back to the beginning? No, is there, is there, I think there was a situation prior to that direct contact. All right, just stop the video. It's difficult to watch, let me just say.
Well, I've seen it many times before, but yes.
Yeah. Chief Semenelli, tell me your reaction to the video.
Well, you know, my fundamental reaction, or I should say, my reaction to the fundamental issue isn't really shown on the video, and that is the fact that that particular state chose to criminalize what really should have been an internal school issue, which really led to the presence of a police officer in that classroom in the first place to make an arrest. Now, you know, we don't have a, you know, a similar statute here. That conduct, whatever it is or isn't, is not criminalized and, you know, we would not see that as a role of the SRO to intervene in an issue over a cellphone, you know, violation, which I think was the underlying issue that started that encounter. So, and I know you're focused on the manner in which the force was used, but I think it's very important to state that, that, you know, not only from a legal point of view, philosophically, that is not how we approach the SRO program. So we do have a fundamental, and I'm not judging their whole program, just to make it clear that that's not how we approach it. Now, having said that, you know, our SROs are trained to use force when justified, really the same way other police officers are. I don't see anything in that video which leads to a, you know, a threat or a self-defense situation or defense of another person. So again, I'm presuming here to try to answer your question that the purpose of the officer was to take custody. You know, we, that is not a technique that we would train to knock someone over in a chair like that. I mean, there's any number of other techniques that we would approach first. And again, with our first approach being some type of verbal approach, that we always train that we start verbally and we try to deal with the situation through conversation rather than an application of some kind of force. So although we would not be involved in an analogous situation, let's just say for some reason, there was legitimate reason to make an arrest there, you know, that is not a technique we would train.
Let me ask you, what are, what are the techniques of the Rochester Police Department that would be an alternative to what we see here?
Well, there's any number of techniques. Again, the first thing we teach is to try to talk it through. Then, you know, we would teach, you know, different techniques, for example, like grasping the arm, moving the arm first, trying to do, go into an escort position, you know, and then go from there. Again, it doesn't, what makes this difficult is you don't really see resistance. I'm sorry, you don't really see resistance on the part of the student, what you see is the officer, and again, presumably that she's refusing to get out of the chair. But, you know, one of the things we can do, and I know we've discussed this before, we would be happy to set up a time where we would bring in our defensive tactics instructors. We could do it in this room for your committee or anybody else on the board that's interested, and we can show you exactly, demonstrate the techniques that we would, that we would train in that situation or in other situations. And I think that would be good because, you know, you would actually see, you can ask questions and, you know, that would be one way, and we'd be happy to schedule that anytime you want. But yeah, what we would try to do, we would try to engage that person with conversation. If they absolutely refused, let's say we had to make an arrest, we probably would start with some type of arm bar to try to get them to get up out of the chair and put them in what we call an escort position and get them out of the classroom and then handcuff them.
I'm gonna ask probably a difficult question.
Okay.
You may not be able to answer it, but let me just ask this question. It seems to me that in this particular case, he had no value for the 16-year-old child. And when you, when you look at, there was just an article, I didn't read the whole article, but I saw it, I think on Facebook, where in the New York Times, they talked about whiteness. And, you know, when you look at the young man that killed those, the nine church members in the AME Church, or when you see the Colorado shooting, or just in Leroy, where they're, you know, he shot, you know, he fired a gun.
Sure.
So what's, what's the frame of reference when you have police officers who can, or even, I think, you know, early in the year where a person killed a state trooper? So how does, how do you, how, what's the frame of reference for being able to handle those situations, difficult to handle when it comes to the lives of African-American people? How do you, and if I'm saying it wrong?
Well, I'm not really sure what you're saying, I'll try to answer it. What I think you're asking is, you know, what we, we want officers to approach everybody in an even-handed way, and what we train them to do, what they're supposed to do is, let's say in a force situation, if you want to talk about that, is react and deal appropriately with a threat without regard to the person in any way, shape, or form. What I always say about the Rochester Police Department, what our aspiration is that anybody in this community will feel comfortable approaching a Rochester police officer for help when they need help. I don't want anybody in this community to feel, whether it's because of being an African-American, being Islamic, being Hispanic, different sexual orientation, whatever religious, whatever the case may be, our goal is that anybody in this community that needs help or needs service from a police officer is comfortable coming to a Rochester police officer. Now, we know, we have over 700 officers, 700 individuals, and I certainly can't sit here and tell you that I can get into the heart and the soul and the mind of every one of them, you know, but this, this is what, this is what we preach, this is our, this is our core value as a police department, this is what we aspire to.
Okay. Any training that you do around culture competency or bias?
Yeah, we do quite a bit of training on that. It starts right in the academy. What we've started doing now in the last few years is getting recruits, when they're still in the academy, out to community meetings. Right now, this is something we've done for the last two years, I think since I've been chief, we've, we bring in clergy members to sit down with the, our recruits the first week of the academy, and they sit down and they actually have lunch together and they talk about some of these issues. So these are small steps. We recently sent the entire department to what we called Spirit of Service Training. This was initiative of Chief Shepherd, where we went through a process where we trained a number of officers to be instructors, and then they went out and we had training sessions, multiple training sessions, and this is what we talked about, you know, the core value of treating people the way you would want your family members and loved ones to be treated. Now, again, some, it's like, just like you may, certain teachers may be better teachers than others, or apply things better than others, it's the same. And then, but I, but I think overall, this is, this is a hallmark of Rochester Police Department, because this is what we're about.
In regards to what you said about students, how you want everyone to feel comfortable around the Rochester Police Department, do you think that's harder for my age group, specifically, I believe, for us to magnitude, well, not magnitude, but gravitate towards y'all?
Sure. I think you're absolutely, I think, yeah, I think there's, I think it is harder in some ways. One of the things that's interesting, and don't let me repeat myself, I mentioned this before, but about two and a half years ago, we did a community survey to try to see what members, and we brought in Cornell to do an independent, Cornell University do an independent survey. And we found that there were segments of the community where there was clearly a lower level of trust than in others, certain age groups, younger age group, which you're much younger than me, so, that there was a, there was a lower level of trust. But one of the things we found is this, that the people that tended to have a lower level of trust in the Rochester Police Department reported in the survey that they did not have actual, they never had actual contact with a Rochester police officer. If you broke it down by those who reported having actual interaction with a Rochester police officer, they were statistically much more likely to have a more favorable and a more trusting view. So what, this is really what we've been trying to do then, is get these officers out of the cars, get them meeting and talking to people. And to go back to what you said, and kind of bring it back to SROs, I've talked to any number of kids, you know, throughout my career here, especially recently, that have told me point-blank that, well, the only police officer they ever liked or trusted was their SRO. And I think part of the reason for that is, this gives them an opportunity day in and day out, it's not just a cop that's running them off the street corner and they never see them again, but it's a cop that they see in the school every day, you know, that they know is a police officer, but yet, you know, they have the opportunity to get to know one another and get on even a first-name bait, and become human beings to each other.
Any questions, Commissioner Adams, any questions? Mr. Jacobs, any questions? Let me just ask this question.
Sure.
Because we also had this discussion, I work at Main Street Settlement, and so we also had this discussion one Saturday at Main Street Settlement with our youth workers and with some of the Rochester City School District teachers, as well as some Nazareth College representatives where we talked about, and students from Nazareth, where we talked about of this whole issue. The other issue in there is, and probably it's not for you, is, is that how did the police officer get called in there anyway, and why, the issue of the teacher? You know, so it's that role of the police that was called, but also, what was the role of the teacher? Why was the teacher not able to handle that situation himself? And our discussion was, what should have happened in that kind of a situation? And so we had some discussion around, around that. And of course, we came to find out, as, you know, the girl knows now, you know, she had lost some family members, you know, grandmother and a mother. And the interesting thing for me was, when we had this conversation at Baden, was, is that she came to school, meaning that it was a safe environment for her. She felt it as a safe haven, that she would come to school even though she had all of those issues going on. And so, you know, it's a, it's a complex issue.
Absolutely, that is, that type of situation where there is not an imminent threat or a safety issue, really, and I'm sure I have police officers that might be able to sit down and talk to this young lady and maybe help her through this period, but the bottom line is, it's not, a removal from a classroom in a situation like this is not what we would want our SROs to get involved in.
Okay, all right.
Absolutely not.
Any questions from the audience? Let me just open this up to the audience. Students, you have any questions? Ms. Simmons, you have any questions? Thank you, Chief, I appreciate, oh.
The cameraman has a question.
Oh.
How you guys doing? My name is Lane Wall, I'm a student of the Rochester City School District, one of the first student body presidents at Wilson High School, class of 2012. Now, I'm on the part of the media team here, working, broadcasting most of our events that we have here, committee meetings, graduations, and also, one of our first sports game was live on air this year. Now, a question with the Rochester City School District, their involvement in the schools, me being a part of the media, I go home every day, I watch CNN, I watch Fox News, and I see some of the harsh realities that we have to deal with now. What steps do you guys take to influence students of this age to become police officers, to mentor them into a path where they could be the one good officer in the situation besides some of the harsh realities we deal with?
That's a great question. What we've done up until recently, we tended to look at people probably more your age that are about the point they can take a test. We do some pretty significant recruitment efforts locally, we go to military bases, we go to churches, we go to colleges around the country, and we try to find the right people. What we've tried to focus.
On the high school level? Like, there's a junior RCLC program for the military, but what about the police department? Is there anything that the police do in the high schools?
Oh, yeah, we do, let me ask, let me respond to that.
Go ahead, I was getting to that.
Yeah, the city, because I was very instrumental in this, along with Mayor Warren. We have a relation, a, a, a program between the City of Rochester and the Rochester City School District called this Public Safety Program. And in that program, and you'd be happy, I'll be happy to take you around to show you this program, it's housing the Rochester Education Opportunity Center where you have police, you have students who are learning about police, fire, EMT.
911.
911. So that program is going, and it is a very exciting program, very exceptional program, attendance is like 95, 96 percent, and it's going very, very well. I'd be happy to take a, you know, give you a tour to go over there, because it's a, it's a very, very relevant program. What we found, however, is that some of the, some of the students want to do other things. For example, students who've been involved with the EMT program now want to go on to become a medical doctor, those kinds of things. So it opens up their eyes. It's a very good program. Kids feel safe in that program. You have the greatest professionals over there, it's teachers from the police department, fire department, EMT, that are doing a great job with our students who are in that program.
And I just want to add, obviously, we like them to consider a career in law enforcement, but we love it too, that if they decide to go and become a lawyer, a doctor, an engineer, whatever they choose to do in life, we still feel that we've created a bond that will last and will hopefully they'll pass on, because, again, we've gotten to know each other as human beings. So while we love to see them go and take that test and come on the RPD, we still think there's a lot of benefit to the program because we've gotten to know each other, even if they choose another path.
Thank you.
I'm just gonna ask you to speak up a little so I could hear you.
Well, we want to record it, oh, okay, okay. How's everybody doing? My name is James Weathers, and I go to the Leadership Academy for Young Men, and I graduate this year, actually, 2016, and I am one of the students that go to the, that goes to the Public Safety Program over there at Chestnut Street, and it's a really good experience there too, and it's teaching us, you know, the one-on-ones of being a police officer and the rules and everything, and it's a really good experience.
Okay, thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, also to end to Lane's question, appreciably, the chief and his team have reached out to the district because they have a number of mentors on the department who would like to be a partner with some of our students, and we're embracing that partnership.
Thank you. Speaking to the mic.
Hi, I'm Erica Simmons, I'm the Chair of the Parent Advisory Council. So one of my questions, which I'm also gonna ask to the head of the Security Department for the district too, is what are the disciplinary actions for the individuals who are seeing or mistreating students or, you know, things like that? Like, what would be the action, if this was Rochester and that was a police officer of your department, would there be any disciplinary action towards that officer?
Yeah, well, okay, again, I'd just like to move away from that particular incident, if I can tell you, yes, we, and that's really where my job is, I've talked to you about what we aspire to do, what we want the police officers to do, and like in any, you know, sometimes we have officers that do not conduct themselves properly, and that's really my responsibility to ensure it's taken care of. There's a whole spectrum of things that can be done. You know, we do have civil service rules we have to follow, we have union contract, we have a union contract that we have to follow, but to try to give you an idea, if there's a case of excessive force, let's say, whatever the, we would look at the circumstances, we would discipline the officer, depending on the seriousness of the particular act, what the officer's record is, is this the first time in 10 years that they've had a situation like that, or is this the second or third one? The level of force that was used, I mean, there's different levels of excessive force. We would, what we do, just so you're aware, even before it gets to discipline, we have two separate reviews of every single, at least two separate reviews, every single use of force is required to be reported. It's reviewed by the officer's chain of command. It's also, I'm sorry, reviewed separately by Professional Development Section, which is our training section. So even if there's not a complaint, or even if we think the force was technically justified, but we think the officer should have done something differently, we will initiate remedial training on our own accord, you know, without a complaint or someone raising an issue. If there is an issue raised, if through our review, we think there's an issue of excessive force, then under my authority, an internal investigation will start, or if a person who believes an officer has done something improper, makes a complaint, we'll do an investigation. All these investigations, in addition to being reviewed by us, are reviewed by an independent civilian review board, which will then render a recommendation as to whether they think the act was justified or not. And then, again, if we find something improper, it could result from discipline. Discipline could be anything, you know, from, at the lower level, a letter of reprimand, all the way up until termination.
Follow-up question, what percent of those complaints result in a finding that warrants discipline?
I don't have that number, I can provide that, we actually publish quarterly, our professional standards section, we put it on the city website, I just have the numbers in front of me, so I don't want to speculate, but we do occasionally, you know, have findings.
It's quite low.
Okay, well, quite low, maybe, yeah.
Anything else?
She had her hand up too.
Cynthia Harriet, and it's for the chief, but also whoever on the, on your panel that might need to respond to it, but as a member of the, this community task force, the Code of Conduct Committee, and Barb is as well, who's here, but my question is, along the lines, we're looking at redoing the code of conduct policy, and we're working on a draft, and one of the things that came up is that you made a comment earlier about you don't advise the SROs to take action in like policy violations like that, which is fine, but we didn't find that in like an operating procedure. So I'm wondering, from your knowledge, or, you know, maybe I should probably check with Joe, I'm not sure, but where would we find that? So this is more of a research-based question for me, because it impacts our, you know, discussion in the draft forms we're coming up with.
There's two basic documents, one would be the contract with the district, which lays out the duties and responsibilities of the SRO, and then we have a general order, I know you're familiar with our General Orders Manual, and in fact, when the ground rules changed in the most current contract, I know this is something that you and I discussed, we took what was in our current contract and incorporated into our General Orders Manual. So those are the two documents that would really be the starting point, and then certainly, you know, Sergeant Laird can give you whatever other internal directions or guidance that she gives the SROs.
Sergeant Laird, would you like to have any comments or anything about this?
Hello, Sergeant Laird, I've been with the police department for 18 years. I have a bachelor's degree from SUNY Brockport, I'm currently a student at Boston University getting my master's degree. And prior to becoming a police officer, I worked at Mary Carriola Children's Center, so I come from a social-type atmosphere. I think that the issue with what you're saying is, can you show me where it says what the SRO does and doesn't do? The problem with that is, the SRO's job is really what you make of it, and not every situation can be attributed to a policy or a general order. You know, in a school resource officer, is there to be a mentor? Is there to be a teacher? Is there to build rapport and relationship with students so that they have a positive view of law enforcement? And really, and if you look at like national standards, like NASRO, which is the National Association of School Resource Officers, if during this incident, the president of that was on CNN and made a lot of statements regarding this particular incident in which you speak of, and it's really, the job is 80 percent, you know, counseling, mentoring, and really only 20 percent law enforcement, very small part of their job is law enforcement. So they may be involved in something that is discipline-related. So say, a student's in the hall and won't go to class, and is just kind of hanging out and doesn't want to be there, you know, the SRO may be going by and may, as part of the team, engage that person, especially if they have a rapport with that person, try to get them to go to class. So they may get involved in some things that are not criminal in nature. I myself go to the schools, I come across kids that aren't in class, don't want to go to class, where do you belong? I won't repeat some things that are said, but, and, you know, what I'll end up doing, but I realize that it's not my job to enforce, this one, I'm not, certainly not going to handcuff people, but I, all our school resource officers are very well-trained and know what they can and can't do, and are very good mediators, and sometimes I might just follow them around. I may not, I'll just follow them around, because you know what, eventually they'll get annoyed with an old lady following them around, and they will go to class. So, but as to like, it's very difficult to write, you will do A, B, C, and D, and that is all you will do. It's very difficult to say that, because as the chief mentioned earlier, we don't want them. we don't want them to be where they're just sitting in their office and they're only called as a last resort and as, you know, the, the bouncer, the person that's gonna take them to jail. Because if you use them only in that fashion, the students will only see them in that fashion. So if a student's in crisis and then they see the school resource officer coming and in their experience, they know that they're only called when it's so, it might actually make the situation worse. Whereas if you have that building lasting relationship with the students and they're used to seeing the school resource, resource officer in many different scenarios, when the school resource officer comes in, it may actually help diffuse the situation.
I'm gonna ask, uh, Cynthia Harriet, um, is it possible that Sergeant Laird and you can sort of get together as we're moving into this final stages of this, of our, um, Code of Conduct policy? So that we're all on the same page here? Cause if you have some questions about, you know, specifically what the role is of the SRO, then if Sergeant Laird, if you'd be willing to.
Of course.
Have a conversation with, with our team around that. I think that, you know, it would, you know, we've, hopefully we can get on the same page around that. If that's possible.
Yeah, that'd be great. Um, cause one of the things I, I hope that's okay, is like your, your GL or general order on this. Just on this. Cause what we're finding is that it's no one's fault is that when you're in a vacuum as we look at this policy, we're trying to develop it. We find out there are certain ways that people operate that it may not be before us. So we're trying to close it up also.
Right.
I mean, if it's already being done, we don't want to reinvent the wheel or look for trouble where it is now.
Right.
We just want to make sure that it's clear about communication that this encompasses everything that needs to be done.
Yeah, so if I can ask you all.
The only other point I'd like to make, and I know I've mentioned this.
Your permission, Chief.
Yeah, sure, absolutely. Yeah, with, with, um, lost my train of thought. One of the points I did want to make, one of the issues we do have, not issues, but one of the realities I should say, is that, you know, the different principals approach their schools differently, have different philosophies. And, and so like, just like we have a general order which has some very basic rules and guidelines, as a sergeant pointed out, we, police approach their jobs differently. And there's definitely one, one, one of the realities we have to face is, uh, principal, different principals see the role of the SRO quite differently. And then we're kinda stuck like, we want to be part of the team. Everything that Sergeant Laird has a lot of validity, that we look at this as a team approach. That, yeah, we're not gonna be responsible for discipline or counseling. That's not our job. But if we can help, if we can have some type of intervention and, and assist the team, be part of the team, that's great. But different principals do approach it differently and that is sometimes difficult for our officers.
You're absolutely correct because a personal situation, uh, I happen to be out at, at Vanguard and my niece attends Vanguard. And my niece is, you know, she's, she's kind of tough. Um, but in this case, there was another student that was bothering her. Well, I happened to be coming there to bring her sneakers for sports program. And so this, this, this kid was still bothering her. Well, as opposed to the principal and the assistant, the leadership of the school handling it, they sent the person, the, the student that was bothering my niece to the police officer, which I thought was, was, was just wrong. Uh, because it, it sets up, it sets up a, a, a situation where it, it seems that it is the police that can only handle. And it also says that, um, um, to, to, to fear, um, the police. Or, or in other words, cr, that's right, criminalizing it.
Right.
And sending it to the police as opposed to her or her leadership team having the skill set to be able to, um, handle that situation, um, of themselves. It should never have gone to the SRO in this case. But it sort of seems as if I'm just gonna send it off to the SRO. And that's unfair for the SRO.
I would just say, just an, and obviously I don't know the particulars of the incident. But one of the things school resource officers do as well is make presentations in class and talk to kids about internet bullying, cyberbullying, um, things like that. So obviously I don't know the particulars of the case, but actually it's not unusual for them to send someone that's having a rough day or a crisis or something to talk to the school resource officer for various reasons. And again, and that's why we want them to be seen in other roles and not just as, you know, as you saw. You, you assumed he's going there for the law enforcement role. Whereas, you know, if you, you say, well, you know, you need to go talk to, to Officer so-and-so, tell you about bullying and what that can lead to.
Well, she's not, she's not afraid of a bullet. She, she, I, what I've been trying to tell her is don't fight. So that's what she was trying to do. But she is no way afraid. She's just trying not to do it. You had a, a question?
Hi, my name is Penny Jenkins. I'm a mother of nine. And my question is, um, I'm gonna follow up behind what she's, um, Ms. Erica Simmons has said. And one of the questions is that concerning the police officers, um, you say you have a protocol for saying, you know, if they were to misbehave or, you know, were to hit that bag or whatever may happen. And, um, but at the end of the day, the other police officers, from what we see on the news, they went through the same protocols written up. And, you know, and probably was, I guess they might've been recommended, but yet they still was on force. And they were still be to operate and work in that, in their, um, in their, um, uh, in their position. So with me as a parent, it's sort of discouraging because when things actually break out, that's when you hear about they have all these written up, how they have all these written up concerning them. How you hear about how some of them really matter, might have acted ugly real in some different scenarios. And like, but nothing happened until things has blown, um, out of proportion after they don't really took effect and left, they don't, I mean, that really took somebody's life, you know, and that's when you see all this line. That's when you see all these things lined up of what they have done. And that's just sort of sad because like, if you see a police officer who has an issue, you know, mentally, physically, or what's going on in their home, what's going on in their, their mind, and they're not being recommended, but yet they're able to stay, stay on force, that's a problem. Because whatever that's going on, they may take it out on our children. And my, I have six black boys. All right? And I, I don't teach my children to fear the police officer. I teach them to respect the officer and they have no fear. They love, all right? But the thing about it, how will I know if that's the right one that, you know, should have, was recommended? How will I know that one, the one, that was the right one that was set down for like a couple of months until he got himself together? You know, because how ever do you ever hear somebody say they were fired? All right? You ever hear somebody say they went to jail for what they have done? You ever hear, how, how, you know, hear that? So my thing is that I haven't heard that from you. You, I heard what you said, you know, the procedures that you take.
Mm-hmm.
But how often have anybody actually, you know?
Well, you know, I could, well, first of all, again, and I've said before, no system is perfect. I certainly wouldn't sit here and say that no police officer ever does anything wrong. I will say this, that, uh, a lot of what we do is focused on prevention. So we do take a lot of steps. There may be some other departments. I don't know what other departments do. I know what we do. Now, to answer your question, I, I can account for, I've been chief for about eighteen or nineteen months now. I can account during that time. Um, there are two police officers that have, uh, that were, uh, facing termination and chose to leave rather than wait for their hearing. I have disciplined officers. Um, you know, this, you know, names aren't available because of, uh, state law, but, uh, the, you know, the, we, we do publish the information, our disciplinary information. It's, it's, it's available to the public without name. So, you know, there, there, there are cases that when the evidence shows the officer has been, you know, I've suspended officers. We've had a number of, you know, so each case is individual.
All right.
And, and again, again, you gotta understand though, and this is, I think is important, we're all human beings. And sometimes, just like in any profession, someone, we make mistakes. I've made mistakes, you know, as a police officer on the street and I've made mistakes as chief. So what we try to do is look for, you know, is this officer, you know, is he just simply, he or she, simply a bad officer that shouldn't be on the force? Is this something to be corrected? And then again, depending on how serious, all this goes into the consideration. So again, I don't, I would never claim the system is perfect. All I can tell you is we take it seriously. And, you know, when we do find evidence of misconduct, we try to deal with it.
All right. And then my second one is when you get ready to hire, what do you look for? I mean, are you able to weed out?
Sure. Well, what we do is, I, I'll give you the process. Obviously, it, it starts with a civil service exam. We conduct a very thorough background investigation. It goes into, um, everything from looking at their finances, their school records. We knock on all the doors of their neighborhoods. We send investigate background investigators to talk to every place they've had a job. Um, we try to find that out. Um, and then also we have a pretty in-depth psychological review. And we do routinely weed people out if we have any indication of, um, again, it's only, again, that process isn't perfect either. Let me say that right up front. But we routinely weed out people from everything, from anger management issues, from if we have any indication of all, of any bias or, or for example, if, if we find out that someone's used a racial slur, they're out of the process. Um, right at that point, if we find that out. Um, all the way to things, if, if we find that they're, if through the psychological review that they're just immature, they're too, they're not a bad person, but they're just too immature to be a police officer, um, they can get weeded out for that. Now, again, not a perfect system. They go through four months of a police academy. After that, they have several months of field training where they're with a senior training officer. And we do weed people out there too. So we really try to, we try to, to the, again, not a perfect system. Sometimes people get through that shouldn't get through, but we, we try to keep that to a minimum.
I actually have a question. You, uh, mentioned the, you walk around the schools and you listen, some students say some disrespectful things. Do you disrespect that some SROs receive makes it harder for them to go towards students?
I don't think so. Because I think any, any one, at least in our department, that becomes a school resource officer. They really want, they want to be there. I mean, they, this is a job that people want. I mean, they want to work with kids. I mean, somebody doesn't just say, oh, I think I'm gonna go work in schools. No. The, the people that come be school resource officers want to be school resource officers. And to be honest, I'll give you an example at leadership, cause I know we have some leadership. You guys know Officer Rivera? So, or as I call him, Roundhead. But, uh, uh, he's one of my newest officers and he started this last year. And, and one day I went to go visit him and this one female student came by. This was back when it was Charlotte. And, uh, I said hello to her and asked her to shake my hand. She's like, I don't talk to cops. And, um, and he told me that when he first got there, she had said some, some, some things to him that it was very obvious that for whatever reason, she had probably a bad experience. She had a bad idea of police. And quite frankly, the opposite. It made him want to, you know, engage her more and, you know, change her. And I want to say about a month after that, I'm sitting in my office and I get a call from Officer Rivera. And he's like, oh my gosh, oh my gosh, I'm not gonna believe it. I'm like, you're not gonna believe, I'm like, what? He's like, so-and-so gave me a hug. He came and talked to me for ten minutes. And, and it literally made his day. He was so excited. And then we sat and talked for about twenty minutes about how long it had taken him to, to get to that, you know, and, and get to her. And, uh, so when they say things, I'm not gonna say we never get mad or upset, because we do. We're here. And, and of course, nobody wants to be called names or talked bad to. But in a way, it actually makes them wanna figure out why, Eric, why do you feel that way? And how can I change it?
It's all in the relationship, isn't it?
It really is. And it's really the job you make it. And it's any job. You have some teachers that, I was laughing, I was telling Chief, my dad was a science teacher. He taught in the same exact classroom for thirty years, same grade, same classroom. And he pretty much did the same projects all the time. And then you have other teachers that spend literally, every time they get a gift card for Joanne's fabrics, they're running and getting stuff to make projects for their kids and spend, you know, it's, it's one of those jobs. It is what you make of it. And every school resource officer is different and every principal is different. So what you see at one school, the SRO doing may be very different than what you see at another school.
Well, we're gonna stop this conversation, roll into the next video. This is a little different video. But Chief, you may be able to, to, uh, help to inform us on this video. This is a video with, uh, uh, students bullying a teacher. Um, but I'm gonna ask Christiana and, uh, Adele and Lori to come up as well to give some input into, uh, this particular video, how we would handle this situation. I know how I would handle it personally. But we ain't talking about it personally. You know? But, uh, yeah, in my official capacity, it's something different. Um, but, um, let them get seated for a second.
No, wait, wait.
Now, I asked you what my name is again.
Ms. Cox, how do you feel about this situation? How do you feel? How do you feel about doing this?
What are you throwing? You just throw them away. Okay, yeah, later I'm gonna have to ask you to have a seat.
You're on candid.
I'm feeling smack ass, my whole bag, nigga. Cut the camera. Cut the camera.
Shut the light off, daddy. Yeah, I'm doing my assignment.
Sit down. Sit down in your chair. Sit down in your chair. Sit your ass down in your chair. No, sit down. I know security's out. What's it security for? Sit down in that seat though, right? Y'all laugh down. Y'all laugh down. VIP pass the hell.
Yo, Ms. Cox, I got your back, G. On vote now. We not about to take. Get up. No, wait. Get up and come get me. You just sat here and let them fight on me like that? How? I'm mad now.
That's difficult. That's very difficult to watch. And it is embarrassing that you have students that would do that, um, to a teacher. Chief, let me just ask you, how, from, from, how would, um, if, if SROs stu, SROs were aware of that, how would they, and maybe you Sergeant Laird, how, how would they have handled that situation with those students?
Well, certainly let Sergeant Laird give an opportunity to answer. I think certainly the presence of an SRO in that classroom would have been appropriate at that point. Again, I, I know, and I, I did look at this video because I think it was you or somebody sent me the link to prepare. And it was difficult to watch. I'm not sure I understand everything that happened. So, I mean, assuming it didn't rise to the level of assault or where they put their hands. At, at, at one point, it looks like she was trying to leave and they were kind of preventing her from leaving, whatever. But, uh, I think the presence, uh, honestly, my read of that, that became almost like a, a group think or a mob mentality, to put a little more bluntly type of thing. I think the presence of an SRO to, to stabilize that situation at a minimum and then maybe assess, you know, what actually happened. And, and this is clearly a situation where I think a team approach where there should be consultation between, um, you know, the, the school and, and the officer on what the best remedy would be. But I think clearly to stop the situation, that's, that would be an appropriate situation for an officer to respond to.
You know, it, it's really hard to, to, to guess or anything about the video because you really have no background unless someone knows where, I mean, I don't know, you know, maybe there, there's not security at the school she's at. Or maybe there's a big huge riot going on in the cafeteria at that time. So she knows she can't call for someone. You know, you just don't really, you don't really know the particulars of the case or any of the kids. You know, uh, obviously we'd not want that happening at all. You know, we want all the staff members in the school to work as a team and all be leaders and have that command presence. Where you're assertive, you're authoritative and assertive without being aggressive. You know, that's kind of what a leader needs to be. Um, you know, I, to give an example of what some, what an SRO would do, I, I don't know for sure. I know when I was walking around summer school one day this year, I happened, just happened to walk by a classroom and heard a teacher having an issue with a kid. And the kid was saying some very inappropriate things. And I was like, gee, what perfect timing. And I just walked in the door and I said, hi guys, how are you? What's going on this morning? And the kid was like, you know? And, uh, and I kinda actually. And the kid was like, you know, and, and I kind of actually just ignored, it was a crying, I said, what are you guys learning about today? And they, I can't remember what class it was, and I made, oh, I said, you know what, my favorite thing about that subject was this, or whatever, and, and I said, hey, are you going to sit down and listen, I'd love to hear, and the kid sat down, and I kind of walked away, and the teacher was like, thank you, and, you know, but again, everybody handles everything differently, and that was one student making one comment, you know, and I really think it's hard to make comments about this, because you just don't really have any of the background at all, you know.
The only thing I should really, yeah, I should add that, you know, we want to, we look at the, the schools like the, the community or the beat for the officer, and the officer has to really be there for the entire community, which obviously primarily is students, but it's also the, the staff of the school, and, and so there, there is a protective function for everybody in there.
Right, right. Lori, you want to chime in on that?
That's pretty scary for that substitute teacher, that is for sure.
How would yours, your officers respond to the situation? The SSOs, right?
And, yeah, so, if she were to get that one person in that classroom to step out, if there were security in the hall, or call for help for her, or something like that, I certainly would ha, would hope that they would come in. And the biggest thing is, we go back to relationships, you know, a lot of my SSOs have built relationships with these kids, so you hope that somebody could go in there and take control over, or help take control over the classroom, and you know what, at that point, she needs to get out of that classroom.
Yeah, and we don't know when that happened, maybe the bell rang, and they left or something to that, to that extent. Dr. Tua, talk about the teacher, because the teacher was scared to no ends, and how would, what would be your degradation, or how do you assess that teacher?
Knowing that she's a sub.
Yeah, she was a sub.
Brings in another perspective to the conversation, I'm not sure if she's been exposed to the kind.
Early students?
Yeah, the kind of students that she has in her room, because as a teacher, when you first walk in, even as a substitute teacher, you let everybody know who's the teacher. That's usually how I run my classroom, there's only one teacher in here, and I don't see you there, I'm the only one here, you know, you, you put that structure, and, and, so the students know what to do and what not to do. I wonder if she did this, if she attempted to do that, and also if she understands what the environment she was coming into. Yes, she was very scared, and, and, you know, I was, I didn't feel good watching that, and I hope that the people in that school do give substitute teachers PD, so they understand what they're getting into before they throw them into the school district, just like that. I hope there are support, and also, how do we check up to make sure that there are supports as, as the school? When I was a principal, if we have substitute in, in rooms, we make it a point to check every period to make sure that they are okay, and things are moving like they're supposed to move, definitely, that was a system I had in place when I was a principal.
Approximately two years ago, Commissioner Elliott, you, me, and George Moses toured the Franklin Complex. You had to walk into a class where the kids were, walking out the door, there was a substitute teacher in our own district, and you walked into the class and told the students, you don't do this. And over there at the top floor of that Franklin Complex, it was totally out of control, and when we toured over there. But as you said, that there's a presence, but there was no one, I don't think that that's a policy that's relatively enforced. My son is no longer in that building now, but I'm still getting reports that Franklin is still a problem. It's a challenge over there, and in terms of, the SRO is located on the second floor, and we couldn't even find him that day. But they need someone to be monitoring the substitute teachers in that building.
Not, not only the substitute teachers, they're usually teachers on, on duty in the high school, which I think that is, usually in the hallways that, you know, is monitoring the hallways, and all the adults that should have, that noise, I would have heard it from outside, and when I was a principal, I walked my hallways, that was my thinest, of course, but walked my hallways, so I would have heard that noise from outside, from outside, that noise wouldn't just have stayed inside that classroom, so that's why I wonder why nobody interfered, but people were taping.
Yeah.
Yeah, and it happened for a long time.
Yeah. Any, any thoughts from anybody from the audience, from our other students, or?
I, I do believe, actually, with situations like these, you believe like more SROs are necessary, because I'm looking at the list of SRO rundowns right here, and I'm only seeing one per school, and I'm just thinking, I'm pretty sure that way more people have signed up for these things, I'm pretty sure, don't quote me on that, but don't you believe there should be more than one? Situations like that, there was probably, if there was any, one or a couple, but I don't think there should be more than just one in these situations.
There's a lot of discussion of that, and as the board knows, it's a matter of economics and how many the board is in a position to pay, we get reimbursement from the district, it does not cover the total cost of the program, but it covers a very significant portion of it, so that's a matter of economics, I mean, I, I will say this, that, you know, sometimes after requesting a school district, we will pull other officers there to deal with a specific situation, but again, it's most effective when they're there on a regular basis, and they have that relationship building experience, rather than just coming in on a 911 call.
That's right. Just over at, you know, we had all of these people from Edison campus to come to the last school board meeting, right? You know, we need this, and, you know, we don't feel safe, well, nobody was, we went over there, myself, President White, and Commissioner Evans, we went over there, I think last Friday or a couple Fridays ago, the first thing I saw, nobody was in the hallway, no adults were in the hallways. You keep that down by just coming in the hallway, having a, a relationship, nobody was in the hallways, right? So, because kids need to have that kind of structure, and, and that kind of, of, of people to help them to move in the right direction. We saw nobody up in those hallways. I was asking people to pick up, pick up the paper on the floor, you know, this sense of community, nobody was doing it. So, they, they really have sort of put themselves over there at Edison, in this particular box. It's not that they, in my opinion, they may need more SROs, but I would, I would argue that if they came out of those offices and out of those classrooms, and developed the relationships, you wouldn't have that kind of a situation, because if they fear, those students are going to feel that, and they're going to, and they're going to make them, those teachers over there even more afraid.
I think it's a great point, because really, it's really not only the, you know, Beth talked about that we don't always want to be seen as the enforcement, whatever, but really, again, it's part.
You all can't do it all.
We can't do it all, and, and really, this, we shouldn't, SRO shouldn't be the only authority figures in the school.
That's right, that's right.
And really, a situation like this where they're heckling a teacher would not be something that would really first fall under the school resource officer, and again, that's what I talked about, you know, we want, wanting our people in our schools to be leaders, and to be assertive and authoritative without being aggressive. But again, and if you, to point out your own reaction, your first reaction to the video, you said, I know what I would do, but think about it, if she did that, if she did what you would be here lambasting her. So, I think what happens is you have a kind of double-edged sword, where some of the teachers are afraid to do.
A situation like that?
But just to point out, so now, if, if, if she did, right, but if she or somebody does do that, then you have the parent, why did you do this?
Oh, yeah, right, right, right.
So, it really is a fear of, right, but it is a fear of, and me, I follow the kids around until they get annoyed and go to class, so.
I, I think when.
This probably shouldn't have been recorded.
I think when Vice President Elliott says she know what she would do, means that when I walk into a room, I establish my presence there, as a teacher, and I assert myself, so that we know which behavior is toleratable, and which is not. As a teacher, you have to do that, I think that's what she's saying, I know what I would do, because that, that's, that's, because you set the tone, you really set the tone, and kids follow the tone.
Right, right, right. Commissioner Adams, you have a comment?
Oh, I, I don't have to say more, I mean, what, what Sergeant Laird, Sergeant Laird just said, and also what you were saying, I mean, it really is, like, we have to be able to distinguish between disciplinary behaviors versus crimes, and so if we're talking, and not to discount or, you know, under, undercut the value of school resource officers for other roles, for mentoring, for positive relationships. In terms of the role of responding to crime, that really, that really wasn't rising to crime, and also, think, at, at least it didn't appear to be, and it, if it were, it only got that way because normal student behaviors were not dead.
But that's bullying, isn't it? Is it bullying and crime? Or no?
Just from what I view in there, it does rise to the level of at least a violation, and, but again, and she's saying if it had been addressed initially, it wouldn't have got to the latest.
It's almost, I mean, my reaction was that the, the substitute teacher, granted, it's a substitute, but, I mean, she almost seemed like ill, like unfit, like my response, at least, at least, maybe at the very end she was fearful, but I didn't even see fear, I saw like lethargy, that's what I saw, and it just seemed like she was.
She did seem paralyzed.
So, but the point is that I don't think that having more SROs is the, is the solution, otherwise, we would see a direct correlation with, like, the most orderly, safest, most positive school climates would be the ones that have high numbers of SROs, and those that have none would be out of control, and having that kind of thing going on, and we don't really see that. I mean, it's more an outcome of the overall leadership, climate, community stability, I mean, we have to look at staffing stability and all of these, all of these things.
If I could just make a quick comment, because we've done quite a bit of work with Lori and with Sergeant and Commander Morabito, who's sitting in the back, we, about eight months, Christiana and I were meeting with them and talking about these differences, what does an SRO do, what does an SSO do, what does the school administration do? So, I think it's really important that you forge that teamwork, and you, you clarify the roles, and I know, we've shared this document with you before, where we, we came to some consensus on the SRO different from the SSO, and then what we expect from the school administration as part of the building, and we did have time when they all sat and had talked to each other, and talked about how the protocols were going to work, that hadn't happened before, that's something that we want to continue, we want to try to do something maybe in January, and then definitely again next summer, to build the relationships between the adults in the building, and weave that support for students, so that it never gets to these crisis, really uncomfortable for everybody moments, that tears down a culture of a school. We want to build that culture up.
Erica, you had a comment question?
Hello again, and I'm just saying this because even though that there was no SSO and no security there, there should have been somebody, even one of the students that should have stepped up, too, and that's in a lot of schools, that some people don't think that they're going to be, you know, cool enough, or that they're going to be joked about because, because they are trying to step in and trying to help the teacher. But you know, I do the same thing, you know, I step up and I tell them when they're wrong, and when they are not doing right, even when, even the little kids in our schools, when they run around and disrespect teachers, I get on them, and I tell them that this is not right, and that's what a lot of schools, because a lot of, a lot of that happened in a lot of schools, and some students want to say something, but they can't, because they think they're going to get signaled, they're going to get signaled out, and they're going to think they're going to be the outcast of the group, but they're really not, they're trying, they're helping the teacher, actually, so that's all I really want to do.
More peer mentoring somewhat.
Well, just to go along with that, that's another reason why I would like to see some of the high school kids get active, maybe like a junior officer, or, you know, a school patrol type of field.
Quinn, you also had a question, I'm told?
So glad to see our students here, I'm so excited about that, I just love it. I go to Edison, and I've only been there for like the beginning of the school year, and so far, I've seen good relationships between teachers and students since I've been there, I don't feel like there's any fear in the building, I would say necessarily, unless it is a teacher that's kind of antisocial at a point, but, um, yeah, the SS, the SROs or the securities or whatever they are, we have good relationships with those people, too. I see a lot of joy in the building, a lot of the times when I'm just walking around, aside from like the small violence that you will see, because that's normal in a school that's big, they got a lot of people in there, like, it's three different schools, and then you add in some Charlotte kids that just came out of nowhere, like, don't nobody know each other, so it's instant beef, as soon as you get in there, it's like, I don't know you, I haven't been here with you, I haven't grown up with you, that's basically what school is, and now we got beef because of that, so I just think it's maybe too big.
Okay.
Maybe it needs to be spread out more than what it is.
Thank you, and Erica, you'd be the last person.
I have several questions, and, and maybe more comments, now that we have everyone up here, my questions and concerns is the relationship between the SROs and the SSOs, because the SSOs are employed by the district, correct? And I have had personal experience, because I, it kind of feeds into what Renee was saying with, she has six, you know, young black boys in the school, and although they respect the police, and they don't fear them, there is a stigma against those boys already, so I am here because my concern is the cultural competence and the cultural awareness of this, of the staff members, where I have had an incident where, and even the cultural competence of the leadership, and I'm very glad that Dr. Tua and Dr. Bivaldi is working to have that system more tightly closed, but when you, when you have an incident with an SSO who's employed by the district, and you have the director of those employees talking parents out of complaints, or talking out of setting complaints against either them or the teachers, that's a problem. For instance, personally, when my son came home with a mark on him, he was four years old, and said that the lady in the white shirt pulled his arm, like his skin was coming off, that happened to be the principal at that school. When we tried to go further, and, and I'm a very active, and I'm a very calm mother, and when I went in there to talk to them about this, and talk to the teachers, the teacher actually became very rude to me, and her exact words were, because I asked her, why didn't she call me to tell me there was an incident, her exact word, words to me was, I'm sorry, I have a life. So, from that point on, me being who I am, I set forth to try and find out what happened. And I was consistently talked, tried to be talked out of filing a, a full complaint against these teachers, and even once, my husband and I decided and met, which it was a surprise to them when we came to the meeting, and I actually had my husband there, and I actually had the principal of the entire school say, oh, we're so glad to see that there's a father here, that's a cultural problem, that's a cultural mindset that we're working with, is that people are expecting mothers of color to be single, to be ignorant, and to not take care of their children, and that is a problem, and they're also, on the other side, having fathers not be a part of their child's lives, those are things that, and stigmas that are constantly going on, and that people that you're employing have, even if you train them or whatnot, they have those stigmas, and that flows over into their work, subconsciously or not, okay? So, I am still waiting, today is December 2nd, the incident with my son happened last January, I still have not had word of the consequences that the teachers were dealt with, or if the case was closed, and it will be one year next month. So, when he was saying that there's a process of these officers going through, you know, if they were known to use force, which I think it was, believed that it was too much force, because my son did come home with a mark on him, and then therefore, after that, I was told that if it continued, which he's four, he was in pre-K, that they would have to call an SSO on my son, because he didn't want to put on his jacket, because he was too happy to leave school. I think that's a little ridiculous, and that's where you have the fear of our young black men not wanting to be a part of the police officer's lives, or the security's lives, when you have a principal telling a mother that they're going to call security on their four-year-old son. That's a problem in our district. And then it continues throughout the generations, so by the time they get to high school, and they don't have any respect for the adults, everyone's wondering why, because it's happening in preschool. So, I just wanted to say, what is the relationship between the training that the SSOs have and the SSRs have, and if they correlate, and if so, how can we get that information passed on to even to the point of the leaderships of the school, so they know when it's a correct time to call, and when it's a correct time not to use forceful actions against any student? Because that, I think that's it.
Thank you. And I, let me just point out, let me just last point out, we have some data here from our chief communications officer, which indicates that in, that RPD school arrests from 2008 to 2015, for the 2008, 2009 school year, the arrests was as high as 1,021, 2014 to 2015, they've been reduced to 133, so we're really, you know, just want to commend the district and, and the police department that we have significantly reduced those numbers from a high of 1,021 to, in 2014, 15, 133, and, and they kept going down, now, I did see a small. Now, I did see a small increase from the 2012, 2013 to the 2013, 2014, from 177 to 188, but then they went down significantly to 133. So, the district is to be commended on that and the Police Department. So, thank you all very, very much. And we'll get right into the SRO contract, because we need to approve that, from, we need to recommend the SRO contract and to be voted on by the board in the, on the December, is it December 19th? So, that's the board meeting where we're going to vote on that. Commissioner Adams, do you have any questions about the contract?
Well, the contract is, in terms of the provisions, I believe is the same as the last one, correct?
Yep, yep. So, it's just a matter of, I just wanted to make sure if you didn't have any last questions. So, what I want to just offer is a motion to recommend it to the board for approval.
Well, I, I believe that we really do need to do more work in terms of exactly, like, where this discussion has gone, in terms of insisting that, especially, and this is directed more toward our own employees and our own leadership as it is more so than, than it is to the police. The need for us to absolutely consistently distinguish between crimes and student behavior that's not criminal, so that we can move away from criminalizing non-criminal behavior and move toward consistent leadership that builds strong school cultures. And I think that there could be, I think that there should and could be provisions in the agreement that calls for that to happen. And we did have, you know, Ms. Harriet has been part of the meetings, Commander Morabito, appreciate, Adele Vavard, and several of us have met and gone over some language that is in draft form in the new Code of Conduct that gets acted. So, that really is what I'm looking for in an SRO contract that I would be able to...
Yeah, but can, we don't know when that's going to get approved, so we need to, we need to recommend this to the board. Are you, are you saying you're not, you do not want to recommend this?
We can recommend it to the board. I support recommending it to the board.
All right, so we will recommend this to the...
But, but I just, I just want to be very clear that I, I believe that these provisions need to be different.
Okay, all right. So, that's something that in the next year's contract, we can work on once we, once we have the Code of Conduct, and, and that informs, it can inform this...
It can and should, but I just want to say, I mean, there was a lot of work done last year, and I believe that it could be that we could have these provisions before the Code of Conduct were passed. Or, you know, before...
That's a conversation with our other colleagues that we could have.
Right, I, of course, but I just want to put it on the record that we did have these discussions. I reluctantly voted for the SRO contract last year, saying that there was unfinished work, and here we are again with the same exact contract. So, you know, again, it's not, I'm not mad, I think, you know, not like, certainly not saying that this is falling on the Police Department of the city, but I think that we need to do a better job and could have done more work to establish better provisions that we could be passing now, or could have passed.
Anybody want to respond to this from...
I, I would just like to say that I under, I understand where you're coming from, but as I kind of said earlier, the only thing is, it's very hard to put this type of job on paper. You cannot put in a contract, "We're only going to make an arrest in this scenario," or "so-and-so is going to decide to make one arrest," and "so-and-so is going to decide when to make arrests," just because it's such a dynamic. And we really look at every single one of those 133 arrests, or however many arrests there were, each one is looked at individually. So, you could have two kids that did the same thing, and maybe one got arrested and one didn't, and I can explain to you why they didn't, you know? Do they have an IAP? Do they have, have we already tried restorative? What have they been through in the school? How many contacts do they have with the Police Department? What are the victims' wishes? What are the parents' wishes? And, because sometimes in, especially for me, I'm a very big proponent of advocacy for domestic violence. If there is domestic violence, whether it's in a school or not, if you have a female or male who is victimized by their partner, and then you don't make an arrest, you're, number one, it's mandatory for us in many, many cases.
Right.
What is the message you're sending? We're going to handle it at the school. You know, you have to think in the future of what kind of message you're sending. So, so to say, well, and I'm not saying that you're saying you want zero arrests, but it, I'm just going to say, as you're looking for provisions, I would be, you know, you know, that it's something very difficult to put in black and white and paper, if that makes sense. It's a very dynamic job.
So, you, I don't know whether you've seen the language that was proposed that Commander Morabito has seen and that we've talked about, but I think what you'd see is that it's guidance, more or less, not, not trying to define what, not trying to define what crimes are, because in fact, this language defers to the police officers to be the experts in terms of defining criminal, what's a crime. Like, if there's a disagreement, then the deciding person would be the police. But it's, but it's to empower and to expect, it's to establish expectations that school leadership, that school administrators will be actively involved, so they won't default to just sitting back and not taking the responsibility that they should. So, and, and to establish consistent expectations of that. So, it's not trying to conscribe or prescribe or constrain, you know, saying this is not arrestable. It's not doing that at all. It's establishing a set of expectations for greater responsibility taken, leadership taken, that assertive command presence that you were describing, assertive, you know, that kind of stuff. It's, that's what it's trying to get at.
Excuse me, Mary, I think you hit it right on the head, that we met and we talked about a lot of these things. I actually believe the two documents can coexist. I don't believe the contract will conflict with the Code of Conduct in operational perspective, because the Code of Conduct is going to be, is going to talk about the whole community, how they operate, administration, staff, teachers. It's really for the whole school, and the SRO contract kind of is more directed just for the SROs. How we'll handle criminal investigations in a, in a school, the reimbursement piece, the, so I don't believe though, that they have to be incorporated necessarily. I believe they could coexist. The contract could, could dictate parts of it, and the Code of Conduct, which I think we've made a lot of headway on, and I think it's getting to be a pretty good document, where we're identifying roles. This is SRO's role, this is SSO's role, this is the administration's role. So, so I believe that potentially they could coexist without a big conflict.
And another thing I'll add is this, that I, I agree with what Commander Morabito just said, and regardless of what's in the contract, I can tell you, as Chief of the Department, we're committed to this dialogue and this process and to achieving a resolution, and we're also committed that once resolution is achieved, to getting this out to our officers, to train the officers in what, you know, what we come up with. So, again, I defer to the board and the district on how you want to handle it, but I just want to say, I just want to make, make sure you understand, I'll understand that we are, whether or not there's specific language about this process in the contract, as, as an agency, we're committed to it.
And we've actually had our SR, SROs review the Code of Conduct and actually have input to trying to prove it. So, it's definitely a group effort.
Yeah, Cynthia, too.
Yeah, I just wanted to, first of all, I really have to commend everybody. Mary, you know, we put in some long hours. Commissioner Elliott certainly given us their feedback, and also, we, we've definitely had dialogue with the Police Department, and I, for what it's worth, I just want to piggyback on what Commander Morabito has, has said, that I, I bring kind of a unique hat where I'm former law enforcement, but I, and I've had a child go through the city school district process, so I could kind of understand both sides. And what we've really been doing, I do think they can coexist, and really what it's been for us has been about communication. And I think, Barb, you would agree, we've certainly, my colleagues on this committee, I mean, you know, they're not afraid, they're going to challenge the, the process if we need to, and just, but just, no, I wanted to reassure everyone that while it may take us a little bit to, to make sure we get the conduct, Code of Conduct done, we're going to get it done right. But I do think that as we continue to communicate with each other, that we're going to try to ensure, like, for example, when I ask about the, the Police Department's general orders and some of the listings on duties, those things are going to inform, you know, our discussions, and, and we've had pushback where I've, I've had to try to, and Adele, you know, I've had to tell the committee, "You can't dictate that in the code, because the state law says what the fire department can and can't do." Just because you don't want them called, that's not, you know, we don't have that authority. We, we can talk about, maybe outlining how this district will respond to it, so that when we do make the notifies to you, which we're required to do, that they will be content that the problem's addressed, and we're fine with that. And that's really our goal. In some instances, the Police Department, I understand, when you have to do a major investigation, making certain calls right away may be detrimental, so we, we still have to make the call, but when we do it, where we have room to play, then that's what we'll work with, so that both, the knees of both sides are met. And I think we can get to that.
All right, one minute. Yes.
Hi, I'm Barb Van Kirkove. I'm on the task force with Cynthia. One of the questions that are, came to mind for me when I was, when you guys were talking about this, is, as a member of the CTF and, and, you know, just totally, you know, up to here with the draft Code of Conduct, we want the code to be for everybody that's in the school community. Like, it, it's not just for the students, it's for the teachers, it's for everybody that's in there. So, I'm wondering, and I just looked at the current, I went through quickly through the current contract, does it say in the contract, or can it say in those guidelines or whatever that you have for the police officers, that they will adhere to the Code of Conduct? I mean, for me, that would be important. I don't know if, if we can say that, but that would be something that, if it's not in there now, I would advocate for, for next time.
Well, again, and this, that really is not the most effective way to do it, because this, this really governs a business relationship between the city and the district, and...
But it does also share responsibilities.
The way to ensure that officers do it gets incorporated into our policy manual. That, that's what needs to be done, because officers don't read the contract, and this is what we, we can't, this came up last year, first of all, this is the SRO contract, a lot of officers other than SROs are going to have interactions with students and schools. So, once we arrive at, at a resolution, again, what we, I said, what I'm committed to do is incorporate that into our written policy manual and our training. So, but again, the S, this is the SRO contract, this is part of the problem we had last year trying to come to this, that we tried to address a number of issues that were outside the scope of the SRO program. But, I, I mean, what, what you're trying to accomplish, we're right in, we're, we're together on it.
So, then there is a place outside the contract to have a discussion around it in the policy.
In fact, the contract is probably the least effective place to put it, because again, officers are not going to, our officers know that their policy or procedures are dictated by general orders manual, those are the rules, and by our training. Most officers wouldn't even have access to the SRO contract.
Okay, thank you.
All right, you, last question here, as we're going way over time.
I apologize. I know, once I start talking...
It's been a good conversation, though. Good conversation, sir.
Make it quick. I want to make a statement. I remember, it was a couple of years ago, I have a seven-year-old son, he have a disability, and he was arrested, from, I guess, you know, like, the mental hygiene arrest, and he was to, he was put in handcuffs.
Okay.
All right. I didn't know the protocol concerning that procedure. My thinking sort of like blew me away that a cop would actually put my baby in handcuffs, all right, because it was coming from 36th School, all right? But I dealt with that situation, finally had to have him go through Hillside because they have to have treatment.
Right.
The other thing was that when, when concerning our parents, and by informing the parents about their children being arrested at school, normally, they not, don't know, and like, I'm an involved parent as well, all right? By me having a number of children, a tribe, I mean, more than one, all right? That, it just bothers me when I was informed last year, that some of the parents don't know that their son or their daughter is downtown until afterwards. So, I don't know if they're going to put that in a Code of Conduct or letting the parents know ahead of time before they be investigated, or to be, for they, you know, whatever the procedure is that I do. But I think it was sort of sad, because like, how can you give somebody child and take them downtown, and the parents don't even know?
Yeah, well, we...
They don't even know. I mean, like, who does that?
Well, we...
And they are under age.
Yeah. I, I can say, General, I, I don't know about your particular case, at what point you're informing. I can tell you, our protocol is, we, we do let the parents know if they're under 16, it's a different process for a juvenile, but this question has come up routinely, and between us and the school district, we are, we are supposed to notify the parents. Now, let's say there's a fight at the school and a child's arrested, or a student's arrested, it, it may be after the fact, it may not be in the middle of the fight or until the situation's under control, but, but since you're on the ground there, I don't know if you want to add something to that, but this is something that these, that these SROs and Sergeant Laird knows is supposed to happen.
For our policy and procedure, you know, any juvenile that has a contact, write on our juvenile contact form. We have to write who we notified and how, so if you weren't notified, if we can't get a hold of someone, it'll say, "How many time, how many attempts did you make?" And not only that, you have to write the times that you made attempts to notify someone. So, if someone wasn't notified, it would be documented there that no one was notified.
And if that happens, we'd like to know about it, and we, we would fix it, make sure that if, if we drop the ball, I'm not going to say it never happens, but if we do drop the ball, you can call Sergeant Laird, you can call the Chief's office, we'll get the information to the right people to check, 428-7033, that's the only number I know offhand, but...
But, but again, you need to realize in the Colonel Justice System, that if they're 16 or older, they're not considered a juvenile. So, I don't know that, obviously, and, and again, this is where we're working as a team, if there's an arrest in the school, the school would notify, generally notify the parent. And that's kind of what's agreed in here, that the, that the school will notify the parent.
If it'll help to interject, if this is, we've had some long discussions about, the district has one requirement, that they're kind of acting as the parent when they're in school, and they have notify requirements, the Police Department have different ones, but we're trying to bring them together, so we are talking about this.
Yep.
So, I just, I just want to respond, because this is an issue, and it actually prompted me to become so involved in this issue. There was a specific issue of a 16-year-old. I have not received any recent complaints along these lines. But there, it definitely was pervasive, you know, a year or two years ago, where nobody was getting called, and it's, that's crim, I mean, that's horrible.
Well, I'll speak here, and I've got our district partners here, that if there's an arrest in the school, however it works, we need to have a process in place to ensure that notifies are made. And again, I would really want to hear if that happens. We will work with the school to make sure that doesn't happen. So, I, I do, if, if there's a particular instance, if we hear about, I want to know about it.
Right, so can I finish? So, um, so part of the work has been, I, as a parent, I would much rather get two calls. I'd rather receive a call from the police and from the principal, rather than no call. So, that's been an emphasis of some of this policy changes, to make it very clear that the principal must call the parent immediately, or, you know, or as soon as practicable in an emergency situation. So, if there's an emergency and it takes 15 minutes, half an hour, however long it takes to deal with the emergency, the principal should then call the parent and let them know that their child has been arrested. Now, there's been some discussion, if there's a major crime, where there's a victim involved and there's a need to begin an investigation, there was some argument that we should not do that, because that was thought to possibly tie law enforcement's hands in terms of an investigation and keeping things, you know, keeping a parent from coming and advising their child to be quiet if they hadn't been taken yet, or so, you know, so on and so forth. I believe strongly that we should err on the side of protecting students, and then there might be really rare cases where there is some delay that's done in practice, you know, that, that's kind of where the discussion is led. But you're absolutely right, and I think that that should be something that should actually be in the contract, because we do spell out responsibilities of both sides. So, I agree with you, and I, I would like to see it in the contract. Definitely want to see it in the code.
I'm just sort of, I forget that they don't consider them a young adult, I mean, still underage at 16.
That's state law, isn't it? That's state law.
That's state law.
That's why they can go downtown.
That's state law.
And there's a whole campaign to change that, though.
Yeah, but there is. Yeah, that's state law, and there is a campaign to change that. Yeah.
There you go.
Well, let me just, Mary, did you make the motion to recommend this to the board?
Oh, I have to make the motion? I don't... All right, motion to, motion to advance to the board for consideration at the next board meeting.
Thank you. And second act, so we'll consider this chief at the board, and should get approved, and we still have work to do, so we'll continue that work. I know it's been long. Let me just say, Chief, every time I called, you've come, and I just so appreciate that, that when I, you know, I was just really, you know, after, you know, the challenge a couple of years ago, you came, that happened that one week, and you were here that Tuesday. Now, I was not expecting you. So, I just want to think, just let you know how much we appreciate you. I appreciate you coming to our community and the government.
Well, thank you for the opportunity, and again, we, we are very willing to, for the board, any parents, students who are interested, we, we are happy to come in, we will talk about our defensive tech, we'll actually demonstrate how we let you ask questions, and if you want to get on the mat, you can do that. I don't know if I would with you, but... And if you want to get on the mat, you can do that. I don't know if I would with you, but...
That may be something the parent advisory committee can host. Would you all like to host that? Yeah, so we'll talk about it. Well, he can't speak for the SSOs.
But we can, yeah.
Well...
Well, he's inviting, so if we have to do it, the board has to do it. That's one thing.
Yeah. Free to, free, contact my, we just need a little time to work out the logistics. A little time. We would love to do that and we'll answer any, we'll demonstrate and answer any questions you have.
That sounds great. Thank you so very much, Chief. Thank you, everybody. Thank you. So, so we can continue with the agenda, move this quickly. Do you all need to take a break? Mary, you need to take a break? Nope.
We're not?
No.
Yes, I do need a break.
Just a few minutes. Unless, we can, we can move through this real quickly. Let's move through this real quickly. Yeah, let's just move through this because we... Okay.
I'm going to have to go.
Okay. All right. Thank you. I appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you so much. Okay. So if we have any questions to ask you about the legislative agenda, we'll, we'll, yeah. All right. Okay. All right. All right. Thank you.
I definitely want to talk about this because I'm trying, this is one of the ones that needs to change. Family engagement.
Good seeing you. Absolutely. Thank you.
That's the federal, the family engagement education, because they constantly telling them what they can't do.
All right. Thank you so much. All right. Appreciate it.
Now, since you told me you were a policeman and you're other life, policeman. You told me you were a policeman, so it's probably, I'm not going to remind you where we met. You had me up against the wall. I'm telling you. Reason I showed you that because Willie is constantly, Willie in the room always constantly telling you what you can't do. It's titled one.
Thank you, Laurie. Laurie, thank you.
No, that's under the federal. It's been passed. But we're in the process, so we need to be... It will stop them from saying no to some of the things. It will allow the schools to start having functions that break. No, I think that...
But this is not approved. This has just been introduced, right?
That's one of the ones that we can hit behind and start talking to after.
Okay.
And start turning up the heat as long as office and everything else.
Okay.
Because that's what the parents were saying at your forum, is that everybody sitting at their table was talking with each other, but they ain't talking to each other.
Okay. All right. So let's, let's, let's have, you know, sort of have some conversation about how we proceed with this. Okay. All right. So Mia, can you set that up between us to see how we move on this?
That needs, because they spend a lot of time downstairs saying no to the school. No, you can't do that. No, you can't. And they want to have a bowling party to bring the parents together. No, you can't do that. We keep...
So when I, when, when I sent the email out about your involvement, about not being able to go to the media, now somewhere that's in the regulations or something, so are you all working on getting, pushing the district to get that changed?
You had given me the original copy of the bylaws, correct? Do you still have a copy?
I had all that.
Is that a bylaws in your, your bylaws or the district's?
It's the parent advisory bylaws.
So in your parent advisory bylaws says that you all can't go to the...
You cannot communicate with the...
Oh, you all, you all.
It says the original.
And I never, you never see me mention the parent advisory committee if I speak to someone because of that rule.
Okay.
And this was something else when I went over to Georgia's place, to the Freedom School. This was another, because all those kids in there, I call them children of a lesser class.
So, so, so parents did not write up that bylaws? The parents didn't write up the bylaws?
This was back during the time when Black Mendoza...
I need to get that changed.
You can't talk to the press without...
So if you want a physical, original copy, he looks at that. Sure.
Yeah, but you all need to work up, yeah.
Can I tell you a really short story about the origin of those, that policy under Bizar? He stood up there and said that no parent had been blocked from being in it because it was a change from like a democratically elected parent community advisory council that he implemented. So he stood up there, this was when I was in the audience, saying that no parent who wanted to serve had been kept from serving. So my husband and I went out and signed up and said, we're served, we want to serve. And that began the start of barring people. We were both rejected from serving on that council.
Even Kate from over there at the museum, she's one of the best ones in terms of putting in her work. They basically booted her off of there too, but then said you now can no longer talk to the public.
Yeah, we didn't write this last year. We took that out. We just need to finish it and have it voted on and approved by our council.
All right. We need to finish our meeting, so we're going to just go on through the... Yeah, thank you. And thank you for coming. Thank you very much.
I'll send you the hard copy now. What's she supposed to...
You didn't even get to how we treat our families by the police. You didn't even get how we treat our families.
Well, let's, let's, let's move on to this. The two thousand sixteen legislative agenda, Mia has put this together for us. We've got some of the things that we continued from previous years and we've got some new items around receivership, supporting Assemblyman Cathy Knowles' bill of saving support in schools, funding, some of those other things. So if you all have already taken an opportunity to review it, can I make a motion that we recommend this to the board for the December nineteenth meeting?
Can I have one discussion?
Okay.
And this is what I tried to catch the Assemblyman Gant before he went to Albany for his committee. They're going to be in the process of interviewing, I guess, for the next chancellor. And due to the fact that the chancellor, are you guys going to be trying to contact legislators concerning who's going to be replacing chancellor today?
I had not thought about that in all honesty. I had not thought about it. I don't know if that's a...
The order of what you guys are doing here comes from there. And I would like for you, consider with your colleagues, that you guys should now have some serious discussion about contacting our local delegation to let them know what you want to see in the next chancellor.
The chancellor is approved by the Board of Regents?
Right.
Okay, so that's a matter of us contacting the Board of Regents.
I think I, we would have to maybe do some research. Maybe Mia could find out. But I think there is also a legislative appointment role.
Okay.
In that. I think it is a legislative appointment role. And if it's not a direct appointment, it's definitely highly influenced by...
By the Board of Regents?
No, by the legislate, by the legislature.
Speaker. Okay. All right.
By like political leadership within the state legislature.
Okay.
But because of the fact that some of those rulings are always impacting what we're trying to accomplish here.
Absolutely. It's a diversion of money.
So, so what are some of the, the criteria that you would be looking for in the future?
Well, definitely in addition to the mayor to be responsible for the state, but the urban districts is where the majority of the money goes, the Big Five. Is that we would like to have somebody that's familiar with some of the issues that are impacting this classroom. And I definitely don't want to read about any more charter schools getting approved where young men who are twenty-two years old say they had eight years of... I don't want to see any more of that.
Yeah, let me ask you to reach out to Georgia Ashudo from the Big Five so that we can have a conversation around that.
But that should be something that should be...
So that you can help us to inform us about the criteria that we should have. That we have someone who's more in favor of, well, is also sensitive to the urban districts as well. So if you can reach out to her, Mia. All right. Okay. So motion to approve?
So moved.
All right. Second, all right. So we can recommend this to our colleagues, Mia, for the meeting? Let me just say, did we get a check? I guess I did not.
I guess, I'm sorry. Can I just, like, if we're emphasizing any kind of prioritization, this Support of School Climate Act, the one that was just recently introduced? Page eight? That, this is the one, right? This is Knowles' bill? Yeah, two thousand fifteen. If, if we're at some point indicating priorities, I would like, I think this should really be prioritized because it really ties in with, with our needs.
Well, we do, we do have this on the agenda. Yes.
Right, it's on there. Yeah. And so I'm just, I just, if there's a point where we're talking priorities, because when you have a whole long list like this, at some point, you know, if you're, if you're making a lobbying trip, you're not going to go and drone on with every single one of these. That we should be attentive to the, to the progression of this through the state legislature and...
Well, Will is now president of the New York State School Boys Association, so it may be, you know, we've got some in there to be able to talk to her about if it's a priority for us as well.
Yeah. And also attach funding with it. That's, that's going to be key, to attach funding with it.
So let's talk to, we'll talk to Commissioner Powell about that.
Okay, thank you. Sorry to backtrack.
Okay, no problem. No problem. Just miscellaneous, just want to thank everybody who attended the, the receivership forum. I think it was a pretty, pretty outstanding forum for my first time hosting one of those things and a lot of participation. We had to set up more tables, which was a good thing. And so what's, what's your thoughts about the, about the forum?
I think you did a good job.
My feet were tired. I stood up the whole time. Any, any thoughts from you, Mr. Jacobs?
I think that you're going to have to do more. Like I said, I, I visited the Freedom School after that. These high schools on my agenda for next year. And every one of the children that George has there, he went around the room and I actually telling the story. And out of all twelve kids, all twelve were involved with fights over at least and other antisocial behavior. George doesn't have one policeman or one security guard over there. And the kids show up every day. And when they can't get there every day, they, you know, they, for various reasons, every, they experience some type of trauma in their families and we didn't catch it. Because there was one young man, his mother got jumped on by twenty-five people. She's, his, she says his living room looks like a hospital and he got the little porta potty and everything else. His mother can't walk. He doesn't want to go to school because he wants to be a rapper to make some money. It seems like we should have caught some of this. But every, and the girls, there were four girls there. And one just said, I just used to go to school because I was mad all the time and fought. Nobody asked me why I was mad until I came over here to the Freedom School and asked me, why are you mad? But there's some things that are going around. You're going to need to do with those forms to correct, connect with those parents. But we need to start talking to our children instead of talking to them. Because it makes me now, I got to go pick up me two more because my son has brought two more to my house. Now dad, they need some help.
Oh, wow. Okay.
So you, and you know my son, and that's at fifty-eight school, supposed to be one of the better slots. But we got to do some more. He's in the ninth this year. So, but you know, so, but we got to do a better job of trying to reach out and talking to some of these kids. And I, George wants me to come back. He said they were impressed because I went around the room and I was, I was up in the body there. I almost had to go and have a glass of wine.
Well, you know, that's the thing. It's, it's a matter of just getting out and connecting with students. Just like, you know, when, when we went over to Edison last week, I saw no adults, no adults walking around the building. You know, and that's one of the basic management tools, management by walking around, you know, so...
Were there a lot, I'm sorry, were there a lot of students like in the stairwells and hallways?
Not at all. Nothing, none of that.
So the hallways were quiet?
Quiet. The only thing, they had a towel shoulder and that they were going into the towel shoulder. And that was the only thing that was going. You know, so that was not, we did not see that. Now, I know that Commissioner White is going to go on another day unannounced to see, but we saw none of that.
Well, they've put a lot of heavy-duty interventions in over the past couple of weeks. I mean, like a whole cadre of top administration is going over there.
The day after the board meeting, that Friday is when we all went over there.
But they had started that like the week, week or two before that.
So why do we have all those people come down, talk about they were afraid of being at Edison?
Because they had organized themselves, you know, probably the week before. I don't know. And probably, I'm sure it takes time to take effect. I don't know. I can't explain why the day after the board meeting was quiet. I don't know.
So, and, and when you ask, we just heard the, the student there. They don't have that, they have those kinds of problems unless you got new students that are coming to build it. That's when they have issues.
And that's the chaos we create with our instability.
Yeah. Yeah. So, anything else for the board?
No, I think that we, we pretty much, we're going to beat this one to death.
Yeah, yeah.
Mia is whining so much over here, fingers are turning red.
Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All right. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you, my camera people. Appreciate you.
Anytime you need us.
Thank you.